Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for being here today. Today is March 26th, and we are going to a regular Dearborn Heights City Council meeting to be called to order at 6:11 PM. Madam Clerk, can you please take roll call?
Yes, Hassan Ahmad.
Here.
Mo Baydun.
Here.
Nancy Breier.
Here.
Robert Coniston.
Here.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Here.
Hassan Saab.
Here.
And Tom Wenzel.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And next up, we're gonna have the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Wynn, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Wynn. You may be seated. Next up, we have Agenda Approval.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I, no, I just said I wanted the last, the...
This is not the minutes yet.
This is just Agenda. Just Agenda Approval.
Okay, for this, for today, right?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Councilor Chair, I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the Agenda for the regular meeting of March 26, '24 with the removal of 2-8 city council resident recognition and take item 11A resolution regarding Swapco Park Baseball Field out of order to be considered before Section 4 approval of minutes.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next up, we have ordinance and resolution. First on the air, we're gonna have 11A Council Chairman Baydun's resolution regarding Swapco Park Baseball Field.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad, unless you want, I can read it. Doesn't matter. Whatever you want. You can go ahead. I'll second it.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the following resolution: Whereas Gary Barkoff has been cherished and esteemed member of the Dearborn Heights community, having resided here throughout his entire life; whereas Gary Barkoff has been a dedicated and lifelong activist of the D7 Dads Club, dedicating his time, energy, and passion to the betterment of our community; whereas Swapco Park, a treasured recreational space within our community, holds great significance for residents and visitors alike; whereas it is fitting and appropriate to honor the Honorable Gary T. Barkoff for his outstanding contributions and unwavering commitment to the Dearborn Heights community. Therefore, be it resolved that the last remaining baseball field at Swapco Park shall be officially named the Gary T. Barkoff Baseball Field in recognition of his exceptional service and dedication to our community. Be it further resolved that a dedication ceremony shall be organized to commemorate this significant occasion and to express our heartfelt appreciation to Gary Barkoff for his invaluable contributions as outlined in 11-8.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by myself, Councilman Baydun. Any discussion?
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Wenzel.
Thank you. I've known the Barkoff family, Gary and his wife Sharon, and their boys for close to 45 years. And not only has Gary been involved with the Dads Club, he's also a great family man, and he's been organizing several activities for his boys and their friends, Gus McRae tournaments. They love the guy, and the list of accomplishments could go on and on, and this is well deserved at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I mean, the resolution says it all. It's a well-deserved recognition. I do thank you for bringing this forward, and I hope this council body would go ahead and approve this resolution for a well-deserved individual.
Thank you, Councilor Chair.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
Just to echo what Councilman Wenzel and Councilman Ahmad said, Gary's been a Gary and also Pete Stevens, God bless his soul, the real backbone of the District 7 Dads Club and all the programs that they do for the youth. I coached with D7 Dads Club for years and know Gary as a friend and a neighbor. Thank you.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Saab.
Mr. Barkoff, congratulations. Thank you for your commitment to the City of Dearborn Heights over the years and decades of service. Best of luck to you.
Any other council members?
Just like to add one more thing. Gary's done a lot on his own, but I don't think he could have done it without his wife Sharon.
Gary, congratulations. I want you to know when I first met Gary was 2017, and the first thing he told me was how involved he was with the D7 Club and the Dads Club, and I had no idea what it was at the time. And he was like, you need to come out here, you need to play baseball, you gotta do this, you gotta do that, you gotta join, you gotta, you know, become a member. And I said, you know, Gary, you know, one step at a time, you know? Well, here we go. And I believe that I've been good friends with Gary for, you know, since 2017. We actually served on the Commission for the Cultural and Diversity Commission, which we were both appointed by the late Mayor Dan Pletko. And then I shared my contact information with Gary, and I believe his wife would call first and say, Gary wants to speak to you. And I started to learn a lot of the traits from Gary, and we've kicked it off since. And really, he's a great young man, and I know this is something that was very dear to his heart. And I'm glad that hopefully this gets approved today. I don't see why it wouldn't. It seems like the majority have said great things about you. But I do wanna read to you what your brother has sent to me, and he asked that I went ahead and read this to you guys. So, Dear Honorable Councilman Mo Baydun, I spoke with my brother Gary yesterday, who informed me that he's being recognized for his lifelong community service in our city and park, may be designated with his name. Unfortunately, my wife and I will be in Florida visiting family and unavailable for the proposal at the next council meeting. First and foremost, there isn't any more deserving than my brother Gary T. Barkoff. As my older brother, Gary has always been a wonderful role model for not only myself but his four sons and children. I wanted him, I wanted his service as the, I'm sorry, and his service as the president of the D7 Club most of his adult life. He has never complained once about made countless sacrifices to ensure that children in our city were given multiple sports and recreational activities to enjoy. Gary always carried on the legacy of our parents, who taught us the loyalty to our community will shape your character. Gary exemplifies every trait of our parents' teachings, and they would be proud to see his name recognized for his city's longstanding demonstration of our community service. In closing, please extend to the city council members and most of all, my brother Gary, my overwhelming support, sincerely, Jerry Barkoff. Congratulations, Gary.
Make a quick vote, and then we'll hand them over his quick plaque. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations, Gary Barkoff.
Oh, no.
Can you make it?
Yeah, we're right there.
We're right there.
Please join us. Mayor, would you like to join us?
All right, we're gonna look, we're gonna look at, we're gonna look at our clerk first, our honorable clerk, Mencia. All right, guys, thank you, Gary. Congratulations. Hey, Mr. Saab, looking fresh today.
My cue.
$1,000 suit, I liked it. Gerald, how about you get up to the front?
The podium.
Ma'am, ma'am.
Ma'am.
I asked her to go to the podium.
Let me get out of the picture. I don't think he's bald, Mo.
Let him stay there, Mo. It's kinda hard. Well, she's making the announcement. Gary's a little, he broke his foot on Halloween night, and we just became mobile about a week ago. Shed the boot and going to physical therapy, had two surgeries, but he's doing good. He's doing great. But that's our older son, Gary, and our second son, Kevin, and Jason. Jason? David had a commitment tonight, and we have quite a few, my niece Jackie and her husband, Bob, Gary's fiancee Tracy. And I can't have to talk about Marilyn Summers. She was actually Gary's second wife.
Oh, my God, I didn't even...
I would take my husband to the registrations for all these sports and leave him, because I had those kids to take care of, and Marilyn and him would sit all day at the garage doing registration. So Gary would be nothing without Marilyn. Marilyn.
Thank you, Marilyn.
She spent all those years with Gary, too. I mean, she's really done a lot.
You know what? Now I see why I got all those yellings from Gary. It was probably Marilyn the one telling the whole...
It might have been. And my niece, which happened to be Jerry Barkoff, who sent that beautiful letter, I mean, I was not expecting that. That's his son Jerry, and wife Brandy, and my daughter-in-law, Michael, and another beautiful friend and great partner with Jason, Tricia. And we're really overwhelmed. I think Gary's too overwhelmed even to speak. You wanna say anything?
I just would like to thank the city council for this recognition. I just can't believe it. I know the late Pete Stevens, that was the founder of the Dads Club. His field is the back one. That's the one he chose. He wanted, because he said, I started with T-ball, and I wanna end with T-ball. And he said, Unc Harris is the other field, that was the co-founder of the Dads Club. And Pete always said, there's one field left, Gary, and I hope they name it after you. He said, but I'll tell you this. I told the mayor back then, if they're gonna name a field after me, which I hear, you know, it's in the making, they better make it before I, I, he said, croak. Because I don't want any field named after me after I'm dead. He said, it just, they should name a field after a person while they're alive so they can enjoy it, you know, with their families and everything like that. And I'm really thrilled and can't wait till this summer we have a dedication for that field.
Congratulations, Gary.
Mattson Jesse Morandini, he's another D7 kid. And Cheryl, she grew up in the, I mean, if you're from D7, you know everybody. I mean, I used to go to a lady to get my hair done in her basement, and I knew I couldn't talk about anybody, because somebody there might have been from the neighborhood. I mean, that's how close this neighborhood is. And my boys actually have a golf outing every year with kids that they went to school with, and it's not dedicated to D7, but they call themselves D7 Finest. They get shirts with a logo imprinted on it.
Who came up with the name D7 Finest?
Came up with that.
Why need a new name there?
Chris Campbell came up with that name years ago, but they, every year, they do this, D7's Finest. And that's what, God, how many years ago?
Twenty-something years.
Twenty-some years.
Amazing, amazing.
Yeah, so if you're from D7, you're always from D7. That's the way it is.
Thank you, guys. We appreciate you, guys.
Thank you.
And we'll definitely have something else to plan out for them in the spring or the summer.
Thank you.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Wenzel.
Not too many people realize that the District 7 Dads Club, it was founded in 1953, and it's currently the oldest nonprofit youth sports organization in the country. It's something to behold, and it's been going on for 71...
1953?
71 years.
Longer than our city.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I did not know that.
It takes fine people like these people here and all the people, Marilyn, all the people that have worked in the, on the board of directors and coached and the parents to keep it going for all these years. It just doesn't happen overnight like that. It takes a lot of commitment. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, guys.
All right, guys, next up out here, we have the approval of the minutes.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Saab.
Actually, before we approve the minutes...
No, we want to discuss.
Okay. I'll go ahead and read. Foray minutes from the regular meeting of March 12, 2024. Recommended motions of the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the minutes from the regular meeting of March 12, 2024 as submitted.
Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Ahmad.
Councilor Chair.
Any discussion on the minutes?
Yes.
I'd like to remove 24-113.
This is the minutes.
Correct.
Correct.
From the last meeting.
Yes.
I want to remove the motion that we approved.
Okay. Hang on. You guys are gonna throw me off right now. Madam Clerk, I've never done this, so I think we're removing something from the last minute. I think you had, you'd have to amend your vote. Yeah. I think the last time, I remember when we did the Kenfield, I had to amend the vote. So you would have to...
Dispend the rules.
Dispend the rules, go back to that motion. Man, so what is it that we're removing?
It's AT&amp;T easement permits because of all their poles laying around. I think we should approve it.
As DTE?
No. There's DTE has poles, but so does the AT&amp;T. AT&amp;T has their fiber poles laying around the whole city. I've been in contact with them. They came out, I've talked to them. They're just running behind, and they shouldn't use the city as a storage yard.
Councilor Chair, if I may, there are repercussions with the Metro Act. It has nothing to do with just AT&amp;T per se. There's laws and violations.
This motion is directly for AT&amp;T.
Your motion, but you said remove this from the minutes, the Metro Act approval?
It's not the Metro Act. It's the, it's the easement permit.
Look at 24113. It says, motion by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Malinowski Maxwell to approve the extension of the AT&amp;T Metro Act right of way telecommunications permit contract. That's not, you can't link that in with the polls, because there's violations and penalties and consequences if you don't approve your Metro Act by a certain period of time. So I would not, I didn't know you were gonna do that. I would have briefed it on it for you.
Roger, we never get briefings from you, to be honest with you, so...
What did you say?
We never get briefings from you.
Yes, you do, actually. If you read it, it'd be good. But if you, if you're looking at the Metro Act and you do that, there's gonna be consequences for us taking that off and not approving that. Councilman, I'm just saying, in terms of due diligence, I would not take that act off now legally.
Look, at the end of this, the beauty of the thing about this thing is it's a democracy, Roger. I agree. I'm gonna take your opinion on this. I didn't know about this. I believe they're DTEs. I had a conversation with Barbara, what was her name?
Yeah, from DTE.
From DTE. I had a long, extensive conversation. I told her, not do we just want it out? I said, I want our sods resolved as well, because, I mean, the ones on Hass and Charlesworth, there's three of them, they've been sitting there for over a year. Over a year!
Yeah, that's why we have...
You know, Roger, I mean, we're not, we're not gonna get into the discussion, but, you know, the Councilman...
No, but DTE and AT&amp;T, DTE comes on, it works with AT&amp;T and the same thing with the polls. So yes, there is an ordinance. However, this is different. This is, there's consequences and penalties if you don't approve that act.
Hold on, guys, guys, hang on. Please, nothing from the ordinance, Mr. Wynn. Please, thank you. Look, guys, I'm gonna have a discussion. Any comments from any of the council members on this?
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I would say just leave it the way it is, just approve it and instruct the court of council to go out and deal with AT&amp;T and make sure all these poles are removed.
We've been dealing with this for over a year.
We passed an ordinance.
For him to just follow up with them and make sure legally that they have to remove them and, you know...
Mr. Deeb, I know, I was supposed to hear back. I didn't hear anything from the DTE representative, but look, we've already made, we've already, we've gone way too far. The ones on Hass, Mr. Deeb, whatever, it takes mayor, I don't know if I'm allowed to say this to you, but please, can you instruct whomever you need to to get those poles out of our city by, by no later than this, by Friday?
The way we have it in the ordinance, they tagged them 10 days. If they don't move them, we tow them.
They've been there for a year and a half.
If they don't come in and take them, then we'll pay the company.
You know, a resident tagged them with a sign almost a month ago.
I saw the sign.
I know.
But we have an ordinance that lets us put the sticker on it, and it's due process. Those are $25,000, $30,000 poles. So once we tow those things and auction them off, and we have a procedure to do that, that'll hit them in the pocket.
Can I tell you something? But, you know, those poles are $30,000 a pole. Those houses are $250,000, $300,000. A lot more than what the hell those poles are. Let me tell you what that's doing. That's only allowing more blight inside our city, Roger. So I'm gonna tell you, we've tagged them.
I'm agreeing with you.
We've tagged them for more than 10, 10 days.
I'm agreeing with you. I'm saying there's a process. Let's follow the process. Let's get it done. We've already started with DTE and AT&amp;T at their top line. They've come in to meet with us on this issue.
They don't need to meet with us. Get their poles out of here.
Councilor Chair.
Go ahead, Councilman Saab.
This resolution was passed over a year ago. Why wasn't, hasn't this process started?
I know. That's a great question.
Actually, the ordinance just got passed a few months, a week ago.
It was a year ago. Councilman...
No, no, we passed the ordinance back in February when Ray Muscat came into that meeting.
Councilman Muscat? That was last year when Council, it was Councilman Muscat's resolution.
He raised the issue, but it wasn't until the ordinance was just passed, okay?
I know.
And that gives us the enforcement authority.
Okay. Councilman, let's leave this the way it is for now, please. We don't wanna put ourselves in any way. I'm sure everybody here knows about the polls. The mayor, we have now asked him to please take it into his hands. He's the, you know, executive.
It's been in his hands for a year.
Okay, let's just approve the minutes, guys. I don't wanna go too deep on this.
You know, Roger State said, okay?
Yeah, glad to talk to you.
That we haul them off and they go off for auction. Why should we bother hauling them off? We should auction them off and let the people that are buying them pick them up from the site. And that's just an added expense that we have. Where are we storing them? How do we, we don't have equipment to pick those things up.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do, actually. Actually, we looked into a place to store them for a few days, and we charged, we charged them. I'm sorry, Council. Go ahead.
Yeah, I know, but how can we pick them up? We don't have, we don't have a vehicle that can pick those up and carry them.
Actually, there's a company that can do it, and there's a storage yard where it'll be placed. Then we could follow the due process and put notice in the publication, just so when we auction it off, they can't come out, you stole our poles. There's a process and procedure for forfeiture, which we are doing, and it's in place.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay, next up, we have...
Any other comments on approval of the minutes?
We're gonna leave it, Madam Clerk. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next up, we have public hearing and comments on agenda items only. Any comments from the public? An agenda items only.
Bye, Sharon. Bye, Gary.
Okay? Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street you live on, but hang on one second. He's asking for an additional minute? No, 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 that's for the, what's it called? Okay. That's not for agenda items. Okay. Okay, agenda, did you guys remove agenda? Okay. Please. Sir. Asali Yun. Dearborn. That's all you have to know. All right? Okay. There was a bar that got suspended for seven days. You guys were supposed to approve the liquor license today on it. Am I correct? Did you guys table it? Did you, what did you guys do?
Well, we haven't gotten to there yet, sir. It's on the agenda.
Okay, it's on the agenda. I'm asking you guys to table it because of the suspension today, so I need you guys to table that today. There's a seven-day suspension. There's a ticket that they got in 2022, and there's a seven-day suspension on it. What's the name of this place, company? Vanborn.
Vanborn Tavern.
Vanborn Tavern. It's okay. It's Vanborn Tavern. I text you earlier before, and I sent you the link for it, that there was a suspension for seven days, and it's the first time they got this ticket. And I don't know how long they've been open. Does anybody know how long they've been open?
They've been open for quite a few years.
Like 20 years, maybe?
Five years.
Yeah, guys, hey, guys, point of order. Come on. Come on.
Five or seven years.
Come on. It's the first ticket that they got. So I'm asking, you cannot approve it at this time because of the suspension. Table it until the next time, and then you can approve it if it's, the suspension is gone and they lifted up the suspension. That's all I'm asking. Thank you, Ms. Wynn. Any other comments on agenda items only? Anybody on Zoom? Thank you. Next up, we have fund transfers and current claims.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve current claims and ACH wire transfer 6-1 through 6-67 as submitted.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Coniston. Any discussion?
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I would like to remove number 35 of the claims.
35.
35. I would like to remove 37 through 43.
37 through 43.
For Plan Moran, we still don't have any detailed invoicing as we requested last time. For number seven, I know I had instructed the previous comptroller to have a detailed billing for all the Amazon.
Yes.
So, and it's up to you guys, if you wanna table this, table it. Okay, so I'll, I'll table number 72 as well.
Which one?
Number seven. So we have seven, 35.
So, okay. I have seven, 35, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43.
Seven, 35, and we have 37 through 43.
Well, I still have to read them out for the, yeah. So any other removals?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. If our comptroller doesn't mind, were you able to have a conversation with Plan Moran?
Good evening, Councilman.
Good evening.
We actually did meet with them. They sent over the detail yesterday, so I just need to go through it, verify that it matches the invoices that are, that are on hold, and then I will send those over to you Uh, we actually did meet with them. Uh, they sent over the detail yesterday. Uh, so I just need to go through it, verify that it matches the invoices that are, that are on hold, and then I will send those over to you probably tomorrow midday.
Okay, so we're gonna, so it's gonna be at the next council meeting again, so.
Yes, sir. Can you do the same thing, please, for the Amazon, for number seven? It's the Amazon purchases?
Um, I will certainly drill in. I can't make any promises about tomorrow.
No, no, I mean, we're gonna table it anyways. It won't be approved till the next meeting.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you very much.
What is thirty-five that you're removing? I don't have my list in front of me.
It's Plan Moran. Thirty-five, thirty-six, no, no, thirty-five is, uh, Director Swop, uh, schooling.
Okay.
In June. It's not schooling. It's actually like a program. This is like the fourth time we, uh, we take it off the agenda.
Okay.
It's an SMIP program.
I, I thought I saw another, uh, schooling for another officer, which I want you to know, I praise and I, I love our officers.
They're just under a different union, under contract, on contract.
Again, you can't segregate one versus the other. Employee is an employee of the city, so you guys, we're trying to keep you guys out of trouble, you know, by alienating one person versus the other.
Mayor, I want to, I want you to tell your point of order. We're not alienating anybody.
No, it's not point of order, Council Chair.
Point of order, Mayor, please.
Okay, again, all employees are entitled...
We're not alienating anybody. Please don't, please refrain from using terms like that to chat a better of the lawsuit, because that's not what's happening. I just want to make it clear for the record that nobody's being alienized here. Um, this, this right here, I don't even know if you can even use forfeiture funds to be able to use schooling. Uh, I believe, I believe Gary, Roger was supposed to give an opinion on if you can even use that. Because the schooling...
No, no, I wasn't.
Please stop saying that word from the audience, please. Uh, the ten thousand dollars that, that interim chief Swop is using is from forfeiture funds, and you said you were gonna give even an opinion on if we can even use forfeiture funds to pay for his schooling.
I'm so sorry. I didn't, was not aware that I was supposed to do that.
Yeah.
If you can follow up and show me where, and I'll, I'll follow up. But forfeiture funds, I've worked with forfeiture when I was a prosecutor.
Yeah, I know.
I actually was one of the assistant chiefs for the forfeiture unit for Prosecutor's Office, so I don't see anything that would stop these funds being used for the educational program to helping the police department, um, maximize its, its potential and use of its technology, but I will double-check it for you and get it to you by, by tomorrow.
Thank you so much.
Council Chair.
Uh, Councilman Saab.
Just a quick question. Regardless, this resolution was, uh, this motion, uh, this item was passed the day of the resolution. I think anything, because of that resolution is in litigation. It was done, and they, he became a new position to put it, and I still believe that, let the courts decide on it.
Okay, I guess I don't want, I don't want to have those discussions. This is about fund transfers and current claims. Are you amending your motion?
I'm amending my motion.
To eliminate seven, thirty-five, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three. Correct. Madam Clerk, do you have that? Councilman Conson, are you gonna, you support?
Yes.
Okay. Motion made by Councilman, amended motion with eliminating seven, thirty-five, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, seconded by Councilman Conson. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries.
No to the schooling one.
Excuse me?
Just the one specific one. I don't know.
Take, mistake, uh...
You're voting no. You don't want to vote yes on this?
I want him to be able to use it. I don't want to say he can't.
Okay, then you'd have to vote no on the motion.
The whole motion.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, let me do roll call. All right. Um, Tom Wenzel?
Yes.
Hassan Ahmad?
Yes.
Hassan Saab?
Yes.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell?
Yes.
Robert Conston?
Yes.
Nancy Brier?
No.
Moby Doon?
Yes.
Motion carries six one.
Next up, we have consideration of bids. DPW Director Conrad bid award grass weed cutting for city-owned lots.
Council Chair.
Councilman Saab.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council award the bid for the grass cutting of city-owned property lots contract for artistic landscaping and lawn services in the amount of four thousand, two hundred and eighty-five thousand, seventy-one cents per cut for all city-owned properties listed in the bid document, in yearly cost of sixty thousand dollars effective for the two thousand and twenty-four mowing season through December two thousand and twenty-eight, and authorize the controller to return the bonds to the unsuccessful bidders. In addition, authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract as outlined in seven A.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilwoman Brier. Any discussion?
Yes. Number one is, it says four thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-one cents per cut?
For all city-owned properties.
For all city-owned.
For all city. So is this every week, every two weeks?
For the contract, I went over it.
But why is it for four years?
Uh, well, I mean, it's a renewal of four years. Um, I do have a question. I see that we only chose two, and when it comes to landscaping and, you know, trimming and cutting grass, I can tell you something, Mr. Conrad. For myself, in the past, we've seen many different, uh, people coming in and wanting to be able to cut city-owned properties, be able to bid it, and I feel like we're not getting the best bang for our buck. I also feel like, um, artistic landscaping, you know, we had a trustee from D seven come out here and talk about how they were illegally blowing their, uh, leaves out and, and grass out into the streets. I mean, this is a company that we don't have the best service with, and I, I do see the margin of, different of pricing. I, I, I saw the cut priced different when I looked over the contract, but why do we only get two bids?
Uh, we went out for advertised bid. Uh, we had...
And bid not?
We had thirty-plus downloads of the contract. Um, only two bids were received in the first two weeks. We re-extended it another week and received no additional bids.
You know what the police department does?
To, to be honest, I mean, it's, it's a difficult contract. I mean, it's sixty-two properties in righto, or right-ofways that they mow, um, every two weeks. And so, I mean, it's a lot of stops. And, I mean, I, most of the people who called, um, and wanted to bid on the contract didn't want to bid on the complete package. They wanted to handpick certain lots in certain areas that are listed in the, in the bid. So, I mean, these were the only two people who submitted a complete bid for all the properties. So, and, I mean, you know, I, we have not received any complaints about artistic coming into us. I mean, since I've been there, I, I don't know, you know, if the, if the complaints that you're talking about were previous to my tenure. But, um, you know, in my time here, I've, have not received any complaints, you know, regarding their work.
Mr. Conrad, there was a resident that came here and spoke, and you spoke with her, and then we asked you questions. We even held their pay until we got an understanding on that. You must be a little mistaken.
That might not have been a mine. That, I mean, they do also do mowing, you know, for ordinance, for ordinance.
It was in October. They were working on a resident's house. The lady came here, uh...
Okay, so, so that's an ordinance. Uh, so they also have a contract with ordinance to do mo, you know, people who don't mow their property in a timely manner. You know, ordinance will issue someone to mow their lawn. That's not my contract. I mean, it's a separate contract with artistic to do ordinance violation mowing. This is strictly for my right-ofways. This is, you know, along city-owned streets, um, areas that we've purchased with the FEMA projects, you know, like along Courier and Hanover. You know, those type of properties. So they're, they're basically city easements and right-ofways that, that they mow.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
If we approve this today, I would like kindly to request, uh, request as requested before, I need the timestamp photos from before and after every job.
See, that, that's a, that's a, I mean, I'll, I'll request that from him, but I mean...
I mean, that's the only way for me to approve it. I mean, I used to work with bank-owned properties, hundreds of properties. We used to do the same thing for way less money.
Okay.
We need the timestamp photos before and after for every job they do, even for the cleanup. I need, I need this to be added to the, to the contract.
I mean, that is one of the, one of the requirements when they mow a property requested by...
Director, are you checking their, their work after every cut?
We check, I mean, when we get the invoices, we check them.
You check them? So I'll make it easy on you. Have them send us timestamp photos before and after, so we don't have to go check their work.
It's on their phone. They would take a picture before they start, and when they're done.
That, that's sixty-two photos that they have to supply per, I mean, it's fine if that's what you want, I mean...
They want the job.
Yeah.
They could do it.
Not a problem.
We'll, we'll take care of it. Sorry, maybe Roger, we can amend this contract. Can you help us out here, Roger?
Yes.
Will, will you amend them? Would you amend the contract?
You want to add that they take pictures like, you know, like an Amazon or something showing up right?
I don't think that's gonna be a problem. I mean, we have a good working relationship with them. I don't think that's gonna be a problem.
Do you want to, after the pictures are taken, do you want to see them?
Of course. Every time they want to pay them, we want to see what they did.
Okay, so maybe put it on a database on, on your website, and then you guys can look and check the properties.
Mr. Cooper's inventory.
Council Chair.
Go ahead, Councilman Saab.
So, Mr. Conrad, you said there's sixty-two properties, right?
Well, sixty-two stops.
Okay. Sixty-two at forty-five dollars per cut comes out to twenty-seven?
That, so that's if we add additional properties during the period. So if we add an additional property, that's forty-five dollars for the additional property. You know, like, if, if we pick up a FEMA house, which we've done throughout the length of a contract, you know, that's not part of his original contract, but we ask him to mow it, and he does. You know, so that's his compensation. If we purchase any additional FEMA houses in the next five years and need to require him, you know, and, and ask him to mow an additional property.
Correct, but that's not my question. If you do the math, at sixty-two properties at forty-five dollars, it's two thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars.
The properties aren't a standard lot. The properties aren't a standard forty-five, sixty lot.
It doesn't say here per square feet.
They're, they're right-ofways, you know.
So if the property's smaller, we're gonna get a better rate?
The, the property is much smaller. I mean, one of the properties he cuts is the incinerator.
Okay.
He's not gonna cut that for forty-five dollars.
I'm just saying, though, if it's across the board, you're doing it based on size. If there's smaller properties, then we're gonna get them for a better rate, because I'm trying to do the math with the amounts you put. It doesn't add up.
I, so one thing I don't have a luxury is a total square acres of cutting. I mean...
So if we get a FEMA pro, a FEMA-owned property that we're gonna cut for forty-five dollars, and the lot's huge, it's forty-five dollars in the contract, right? So why isn't it in the contract based on all properties?
Can we maybe get like a square footage of what we're cutting total?
The, the FEMA properties we get are just your standard, you know, household lots, like we did on the four Courier lots we got last year. Or maybe it was two years ago, but, um...
I mean, Council Chair, I think we need to add something to this contract, like a policy to see exactly how much they're gonna charge us above forty-five for the size of the lot. We can't just make it open-ended here. I would say let's table this, have the corp counsel work on the contract, add the stuff that we added, and go back to artistic, or if you want to put it back for bidding, to see exactly, uh, how much they're gonna charge us over that standard-sized lot.
Okay, so can I ask a question? What do I do when the grass starts growing in two weeks?
Well, aren't they still in the contract for one more year?
They're not, yeah.
No, I mean, their extension's over. I mean, and, and it's, this, I mean, this price that, that, on this bid is seven percent more than they were charging us last year. Seven percent.
I'm, I'm not worried about the price. I'm okay with the price, to be honest with you. I'm more concerned with...
But what I don't understand is you're okay with me extending their existing contract but not giving them this one.
It's two more weeks. I don't think that we're gonna cut the grass anyway. It's just snowed the other days. I don't know how they can cut the grass now. Corp Counsel, do you mind working on it?
Yeah, if you, Councilman, with all due respect, if you could kindly just send me a short summary of what you want me to include. Are we measuring it by the square foot, I mean, the acres?
I guess he has to go back to them and tell us exactly how much they're gonna charge us over whatever the standard law is for forty-five dollars.
Okay.
How much they're gonna charge above that?
Okay.
I mean, they could come back and say two hundred dollars.
Do you want the square footage for that forty-five-dollar increase?
I don't know. You're, I mean, you're, you know better than me. I mean, you will come up with something. I mean, I need some more details, like, you know, if...
I, I will meet with Mr., I will meet with him and try to address, I think, your issue, and I'll send you an email.
It's sixty-two properties. What are we paying on for, what, break down the, what we're paying for over the year. That's it. And then in the contract, there's... Sixty thousand dollars a year.
Okay, one second, please.
For all the properties, for all sixty-two properties, for fourteen cuts a year.
It's a little, that's a little under a thousand dollars or something.
No, no, it's two thousand...
Seven hundred and ninety.
Seven hu, it's, it's four thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-one cents a cut. It's sixty thousand dollars a year. They cut fourteen times a year. That's how that number...
So this is, this, Council Chair, if you don't mind, this is, it doesn't make sense. So you come up with a number, forty-two, eighty-five, and you have sixty-two properties, forty-five per each property. So I don't know how you guys come up with this.
It's not sixty-two properties. It's sixty-two stops. Some of these properties...
I understand, but the contract says forty-five per stop.
The, the piece of grass between the street and the sidewalk on Gully Road, by the, by the Lower Rouge, by the Ekor's Creek...
This is the average.
By the Middle Rouge, I mean, you know, um, the small piece of grass on Ann Arbor Trail across from, um, the park, he cuts along the guardrail. The thing's four foot wide. I mean, you know, he's making one pass with his mower, you know...
I, I don't think, I don't think we're saying we...
It's...
Come on, man. Point of order. Point of order, come on. Nothing out of the audience. I don't want to spend too much time on this, but I think, I, what, what this council's trying to say is, one, we want to make sure that artistic landscaping is going to be doing its job properly, because I'm, I'm gonna just stop here real quick, Mr. Conrad. And I know you're not ordinance, and I know there's sixty-two properties, but I can tell you of those sixty-two properties, we have a lot of residents that when they're walking their animals, or they're out, walking out with their family, they're seeing Dearborn Heights look like a very, very, uh, ugly, blight city. And, and, and I know you're, I know you don't want to hear that, and I'm not saying, I'm not saying it's artistic.
It's not the properties that we...
We don't know that. We have no proof of knowing that.
I don't know why he's getting so defensive.
I, I see the invoices. I, we watch their work. I know it's not them. It is not our properties that you're talking about right now. I mean, uh, Roger, they do good work.
Simply, all we need is, we want to see, you know, before and after photo.
Timestamp.
Uh, timestamp. I mean, you don't got timestamp. You're gonna see it on, on every photo that you take on your phone.
They can use it again, so I need a timestamp.
Okay.
Like date, date stamped, and with, with done.
We'll add it in as, as an exhibit requirement for the contract.
Also, to our IT director, uh, my phone, my computer is just updating by itself in the middle of this meeting, just so you know. So I'm at six percent complete. Um, Mr. Conrad, I, I appreciate your, your passion for this and you wanting to make sure that, you know, we're down in garage crossing our T. At the end of the day, we want to make sure that the city is in the best, putting our best foot forward. Um, and I, I agree with the Councilman on some of his concerns. I don't think the pricing is bad at all. I think it's a great price. We just want to make sure that these things are properly being done. Uh, and, and, and you can only imagine... Hey, nobody's saying you're not doing your job. Please, point of order. If you want to speak, you're more than welcome to come up to the podium, but there's no need to, you know, burst out out of emotions. Uh, this is not an emotional thing. This is simply us saying that we want to make sure you're not artistic landscaping. You are the director for the city of Dearborn Heights. We are making sure that if we're gonna spend the money, that this job is being done properly. We're not saying you're not doing your job. You're doing a great job. Nobody's questioning your job. We're questioning a, a, a company that came in here who had a contract with us that blew, uh, leaves and grass and everything into our city, which allows flooding, which went out, and it may be not be your fault. It may be the reason that ordinance hired them. That could be a build issue, issue, but it still happened in our city, and a respected trustee of D seven walked in here, showed us videos, gave us her concern, told us what happened when she spoke to them, and the response was, I work for the city of Dearborn Heights. That's not okay, and I didn't, that resonated with me. So Roger, uh, I mean, I'm gonna take this to a vote regardless. If it passes, it passes. If it doesn't, I ask that you please work on that contract to state a timestamp photo of before and after.
Yep, I put that in. Uh, pictures, date, timestamp at each job.
That's it. And guess what? When they ask to get paid, which properties they cut in those two weeks, we will get a time, time in, in our backup. That's it. By the way, and the same thing goes for whenever we get trees. You start trimming these trees, and we're gonna pay for them. We want to see them being done. We don't know if these companies are coming out building the city of Dearborn Heights, and we have no proof of it. You agree, Roger?
I will include a due diligence clause, which will include, uh, what you just stated, date, timestamp at each job with a picture.
And please make sure that if there's, you know, we'll, we'll talk later on that contract. Um, so hearing any other discussion on this?
Council Chair, can we vote yes on it? Would, under these conditions, be followed?
Yeah, we should, and just have him bring it to us.
But I mean, it's not in the contract.
The, the, we would be approving a contract.
You have to agree on it.
What do you think, Madam Clerk? How would that work? How would that work? Can we, I know, I mean, we've had a lot of open contracts that are just sitting around.
Let's table it.
Do you, should we table it, Corp Counsel, or? I mean, they still have to agree whatever we ask for.
I would, you could vote on it and, um, just get a additional cost, the current price, but I could get, get this to you and, um, and by, say, by Thursday with the additional to add to the, add to the contract, which will verify that they've done their job now forward.
I don't mind the pricing. I just want to make sure that these, and again, this has nothing to do with our DPW men and women. They do a great job. I don't know why the, the director felt, you know, uh, privileged to say that we're speaking about him and not doing his job. That's not what we're discussing. We're discussing a third entity who does not belong to the city of Dearborn Heights, that we have no way of knowing if they're doing the job or not.
Council Chair, so you're saying, um, possibly approve the motion with the writer that I do a due diligence clause onto the contract, send you to review, and, uh, Councilman Ahmed, and then we'll add it to the contract.
Don't just send it to me and Councilman Ahmad. Send it to the player body.
Obviously, everyone, but you're, you're, you're responding back to me when you review it. Everyone will see it, of course.
Council Chair, question for the director. Are, are they under contract to start mowing this season, like the first mow?
It's two weeks.
I mean, my intent was to have this contract in place prior to their first mow this year. Um, I'm sure if I contacted them, they would continue mowing, you know, as they did under their old contract, but my intent was, you know, to have this contract in place, you know, prior to our first mowing this year, so that, you know, it was fair to whoever bid on this contract and was awarded this contract, that they get compensated, you know, accordingly. But I'm, you know, I'm pretty sure that the working relationship that my staff has with artistic, that if we ask them to cut, you know, prior to this, they would cut. But, I mean, and I'm pretty sure that, you know, if you agree on this contract right now, and, you know, Roger makes those adjustments in the contract, I'm pretty sure that they won't have a problem signing the contract. I don't think they're gonna refuse to sign the contract, you know, for that change of, you know, photo documentation. And, you know, I guess, and Councilman Chair Baydun, my reaction is only that, you know, I feel like you're not trusting me and my staff to check their work, you know, which we're doing, um...
By the way, that was, that was a Councilman Ahmad concern, uh, but, um, really...
That was my frustration.
And I, well, I mean, and I respect it. I know that how much you truly care, but I want you to know something. Uh, one second, Councilwoman. Uh, I do want you to know something. We have a fiduciary duty to the city. The last thing that I ever heard about artistic landscaping was that they were trashing our city. So you may have this, and I know you don't want to hear that because you weren't here to hear it.
I know, but...
We were. Mayor, do you remember that conversation? See, here's the mayor that's agreeing with you. So I mean, I, look, at the end of the day, if the mayor is telling you, I'm telling you, this body's telling you that we've had a bad experience, and then we have this contract in front of us that's not being, I don't mind the sixty thousand. I just want to make sure the job is being done.
I know. I just, I just get frustrated when, you know, people do things right a hundred times, and then one time they make a mistake, and that's all anybody ever remembers. And it doesn't have to do with artistic.
Or, or one time, or one time that they got caught.
Anything, I mean...
Or they got caught that one time. Councilwoman?
Um, I guess what we're trying to say, we're not saying we don't trust you, but actually, in essence, we're saving you and your staff the extra work to go out and check on each property every couple of weeks. Makes it easier for everybody. You can do your job. They show they've done theirs. It shouldn't be that hard. Everybody's got a camera.
Right, exactly.
You know, it's just a simple two-second shot and submit it with their bill.
That, not a problem. I mean-
Thank you.
We, we're out in the community, you know, every day of the week. We look at a lot more than just, you know, going from one location to another.
You shouldn't have to go and look at each property. That's a lot of properties to look at.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I, I, I will still take this to a vote. So either way, um-
We'll take it to a vote as amended to have the changes done by-
No, we're taking it to a vote as, as it is. Uh, motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those oppose?
No.
No. Madam Clerk, please take parole call.
Denise Malonowski Maxwell. Aye. Tom Winsel?
Yes.
Hassan Ahmad?
No.
Hassan Sob?
No.
Nancy Breyer?
Yes.
Robert Coniston?
Yes.
And Mobeydo?
No.
Motion carries.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Roger, just get with us on those, uh, on those things. Thank you so much. Next up, we have Fire Chief Brogan bid award, heavy rescue truck.
Council chair?
Councilman Sob.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council award a bid for the heavy rescue truck from SVI Trucks in the amount of nine hundred twenty-two thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars, which will be one hundred percent covered through the OHSP grant as outlined in seven B.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion? I will say thank you to, uh, Mr. Brogan. Chief Brogan, if you want to get up and just give a quick synopsis, uh, this is awesome, uh-
Addition?
Addition to our great fire department. You can let them know how much this cost of the residents.
All right, uh, thank you, Council. Yeah, this was, um, one of the last bids that, uh, retired Lieutenant Lisa Martin worked on, and it's from the, uh, Office of Highway, Office of Highway Safety Program, and, uh, it's a one hundred percent covered grant, so it's for nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and of that, we'll have a zero max, so. So, yep, we're just waiting to hear a couple of last steps, but yeah, we're really excited to get moving on this thing, and, uh, it's gonna be a great addition to the department.
Thank you so much. Congratulations to you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have reports from the mayor. Running Fit Annual Martin Marathon, Saturday, April thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Council chair?
Councilman Sob.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council grant permission to Running Fit to hold their Martian Marathon on Saturday, April thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, at six fifteen AM as outlined in, as outlined in eight A.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilman Coniston. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? The ayes have it, motion carries. Uh, next up, we have reports from city officials. Clerk Senia, annual liquor license review.
Council chair?
Councilman, uh, Coniston.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council receive note and file the twenty twenty-four liquor license review and direct Corporation Counsel to contact or nor draft a letter to businesses with a deficiency. If the department that cited the deficiency has not already done so, requesting the deficiencies be addressed within thirty days of the letter as outlined in nine A.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Coniston, uh, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. All in favor, please state aye.
Council chair?
I'm sorry, we're gonna take this up for a discussion.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
I would like to remove one item out of, uh-
One business.
One business. Out of it, that's the Van Born Tavern.
So did they take care of that ticket, Madam Clerk?
No, it's a suspension from the state.
Point of order. Come on, please, nothing from the others.
It was a ticket from the state.
Do we know if that's been resolved?
No.
I think it just was, I think it was just issued. I saw it on social media.
Council chair, they, they- Hang on, guys, one, one thing at a time. I'm gonna add the Councilman Wansel go first, Councilman Sob, and then, uh, Corp Counsel for Ena. Go ahead, Councilman.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, I believe they're currently in their, like, third or fourth day of a seven-day suspension. So in four days, three or four days from now, the suspension will be lifted. So I don't see why we should remove them. It's just a review, approving a review. It's not renewing their license. It's approving the review.
Okay. Good, Councilman, uh-
So I'm gonna refer my comment to Corporation Counsel, and then if he doesn't answer what I, I'll, I'll, Corporation Counsel talk.
You wanna refer your-
No, no, go ahead, go first.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, if they're under suspension now, whether it's two days, one day, it's a suspension, um, I think that how you should, their license doesn't expire, I think, till April thirtieth.
Correct.
So adjourning it, um, uh, another till the next meeting until they clear everything up would make us look good and in compliance with the state, because it'd look bad if we approved it or whatever, and then they, then the state, you know.
Well, you're not really-
Okay. Okay. Well, I, I wouldn't want to make a vote on a, a, a business or entity while it's under suspension, under, under punishment or penalty. I think they had it, was it February twelfth that they had the, the hearing, although, two thousand twenty-four, although the incident may have been from two thousand twenty-two. The hearing, it was a forty-five day, um, penalty, maybe for the business not being open, but not affecting the license, just the business being open. The license itself is separate, and if we're renewing that license or whatever we're doing with it today, if it's not even renewal, if you're doing any vote on it right now, I would wait till the period, till the next meeting. They have till April thirtieth anyway.
Councilman Sob.
Council chair? Council chair, I just wanna say, it's not about renewing the license right now. All's we're doing is reviewing what the ordinance says, which is checking our records, our police department, our fire department, our taxes, our water, to make sure they're compliant with the city.
So we're not renew-
As far as, as far as the ticket goes, I don't know.
You can't be com, sorry, you can't be compliant with the city if you're not complying with the state. And if you're in violation of the state-
That is true. That is true.
That is true.
Council chair?
Hang on, one second.
Go ahead, Council, uh, Madam Clerk.
No, that was it. I was just saying, we were going by the ordinance. And at the time of the review, which was not today, it was, you know-
And Clerk, let me ask you a question. If we were to hold off on the entire resolution until, the entire ordinance until, because I don't want to single out, I don't want this company to, you know, especially they're in our community, to feel a certain way. If we held out to the next council meeting, um, would we still be fine with that? I don't think it's a big deal.
I think you could table it.
Yeah. I mean, let's just table it. Let's not, let's not, you know, let's, you never know what happens. What if in those seven days, something, they get another ticket? And then we just approve them. I don't want to put us in that position. So why don't we go ahead and table this, if that's okay with Councilman Coniston?
Well, I agree with the clerk. I mean, it's, what the state does is what the state does. This is that we receive note and file the review.
Yeah, but let's just, let's just all be on the same page. Councilman Wansel, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
I think the clerk, clerk, are you okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
And Clerk, Roger, are you okay with that?
Yes, Councilor.
Okay.
I'm okay with it.
All right, so motion to, well, do you, uh, uh, rescind your nine A and table that? Refer it back to the administration?
Uh, we can, I think we can, uh, table it.
Refer it back to the administration.
Or refer it to the administration to, uh-
To the next meeting, or refer it back to the clerk's office.
We'll table it until the next meeting.
Table it to the next meeting.
Table it to the next meeting.
Yes.
Motion made by Councilman Coniston, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer.
Yes.
All in favor to table it, please state aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? The ayes have it. No need to go into back and forth, guys.
Thank you.
City engineer dib right-of-entry agreement with Army Corps of Engineer for the Ecorse Creek.
Council chair?
Councilwoman Breyer.
I make the motion that the city, uh, Dearborn Heights City Council approve the proposed right-of-entry agreement with Army Corps of Engineer for Ecorse Creek and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement on behalf of the city, and further authorize the city engineer to facilitate the work as outlined in nine B.
Second. Motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by Councilman Coniston. Uh, any discussion? Council chair?
Councilman?
Thank you. I think, uh, our engineer, Ali Deech, should speak on this, because I, if I'm not mistaken, this might have to do with some residents' properties, possibly.
Nice.
Good evening, Councilman. Um, so the right-of-entry agreement is, is, um, mainly for the incinerator site, but if you recall, about a couple of years ago, we had some parcels that the city owned, um, across that, that are near the river, near the Ecorse Creek, and that's the inlet and outlet pipe. So if you look in the attached exhibit, I attached to the supplement, it shows where the parcels are. Um, I verified with our, um, um, city, um, um, assessor, we own all the parcels. So the only, the only, uh, right-of-entry agreement the army is asking for is, uh, for property owned by the city, so the, the church on the site is not needed. Uh, they need to assess, um, uh, provide a survey, do soil boring, and, uh, this is preliminary engineering. I'd just like to add that we have been working very closely with the army ever since we received the design money about a year ago, March of last year, when Rashida Tlaib got us the one point seven million dollars. And, uh, I didn't want it to go back another ten years before we actually used the money. So we have been, um, working constantly with the army, trying to get them to at least start the design, and this is a big step for us. If we get the design of that, um, um, ultimate solution, you know, the one we've been talking about since, what, nineteen, ninety-four? Um, I wanted to get this thing on record, so at least now I have a design for a solution to the flood issue, so I can go and proceed and ask for funding to, to build. Uh, this is a huge step for us. I think we have everything we need, except for, there was a typo, I think, our assessor, on, on a number of parcel, so we corrected that one, one of them. Uh, so when we sign that agreement, when you authorize it and we get the signed agreement, we will put the right parcels in place, and we should be able to see activities in the field for a change. You know, you will have surveyors, you will have soil boring. Um, there's some concern about the quality of, of the soil. I couldn't find any record, um, in the city that indicates, I know it was an incinerator site. I, I just, when, when it was closed, I don't know if there was any closure. Did we ever test the soil? This is what, this is gonna give us. That's the one point seven million dollars that Rashida Tlaib got us, so we, we should be able to finally start seeing, um, you know, this will be the ultimate solution that will be in turn, um, um, we're also coordinating with Wayne County on the interim solutions, you know, for the cleanup and stuff. So this is, it's, it's important, it's huge.
Council chair, I, I believe this is the project for the retention, detention basin at the old incinerator-
Yes, sir.
To alleviate the flooding on the Ecorse Creek.
That's the entry point to Dearborn Heights, um, for, for the, um, um, the water into the Ecorse Creek. So as you know, the five miles in Dearborn Heights were actually the lowest points in the creek, and the, the, um, the area that's most prone to flooding. Um, it is not as bad upstream, it's not as bad downstream. We happen to be in that region. Um, so the, um, uh, the lady in the real estate with the army, um, what we're trying to do is, if we are gonna do that solution, which I believe to be the ultimate solution, you are gonna intercept the water. Um, uh, we are going to design it for a five-hundred-year storm, so that is, you know, build the pond large enough, and then all the auxiliary, the pump houses and stuff that will draw the water into the pond, retain it. It's a, it's a detention basin, basically. Um, and then release it during dry weather in a controlled manner. So this way, um, you prevent the water in high, you know, rain event from flooding Dearborn Heights. That's the entry point. Hopefully, if, if all goes well, this, I believe, is the ultimate solution. That's the true solution.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Any, any more questions? Any council members?
Can we go ahead and take this, uh, motion to a vote? Whoever approves it, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The motion passes. Moving on to item nine C, interim comptroller Turner, broadspire payment arrangement.
Council pro town.
Go ahead, sir.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the new payment arrangement between the city and broadspire services. In addition, authorize the mayor and the comptroller or clerk to sign future warrants for these payments to broadspire services, and the treasurer to issue payments accordingly as outlined in nine F.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion by Councilman Sob, seconded by Councilman Winsel. Any discussion?
Council, uh, vice chair?
Councilman Coniston, please go ahead.
Why are we doing this? Why are we third, you know, privatizing or third-partying this out to, uh, uh, and putting money in an escrow account to pay our bills?
Interim comptroller, can you please answer, Councilman Coniston?
Yes, sir. Um, Councilman, those, that, that company is our administrator, uh, and they handle all of our workers' comp. It's a, it's part of a separation of duties, and we, we like to use them because they actually administer the program on our behalf, and they are more knowledgeable than the staff within the city to actually manage that workers', the workers' comp claims.
Yeah, and I'm familiar with them. They're, so, so these are only for the workers' comp claims?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir, this is workers' comp.
Workers' comp claims only.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Also, Councilman Coniston, any more questions from anybody? Councilman Winsel, please go ahead.
How many, how many workers' comp claims are, are active right now?
We have quite a few.
Like, how many, like, ten?
Uh, no, it's probably closer to twenty-five or thirty.
Of city employees?
City or former city employees, because once you're an employee, that, that benefit exists on your behalf. So if you retire, you still have the ability to file those claims, if that claim was active prior to your retirement.
Have, have we used these, this company in the past, or if not, have we handled it ourselves in-house?
Um, to my knowledge, we've, we've used this company in the past.
Long time.
Yeah.
Any more discussion from anyone? I see none. Can we take this to a vote? Whoever approves, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passes. Uh, moving on to nine D, IT Director Cooper, purchase and payment smart deploy subscription.
Council chair?
Go ahead, Council, Council, Councilman Coniston.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the purchase of a hundred and fifty yearly licenses for the smart deploy directly to the manufacturer for a cost of two thousand four hundred and sixty-six dollars using account number one oh one, two five eight, seven two eight, zero zero one as outlined in nine D.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Council, um, motion by Councilman Coniston, seconded by Councilwoman Malonski Maxwell. Any discussion?
Council pro town.
Councilman Winsel, please go ahead.
Thank you. Um, what exactly is that? I mean, smart deploy.
Director Cooper is gonna go ahead and go over it. Thank you, sir.
Uh, so what smart deploy, deploy does for me is it's imaging software, and especially with us getting ready to go to Windows eleven. This is software that will reimagine a computer with a fresh install of Microsoft Windows, specifically Windows eleven. Um, this particular company, uh, is unique in the fact that it, um, includes all the driver packs. That's all the little pieces of software that makes the computer work with, with microphones, uh, cameras, all the background software. Um, and it's all based in our server, so I can actually deploy and say, hey, this is the computer. Um, I need now upgrade to Windows eleven. It does the Windows eleven upgrade, or let's say it's a computer that, uh, is having trouble. Sometimes it's easier just to erase the computer completely, do a fresh install of Windows, uh, to solve the problems so that staff can keep on working.
Is that two thousand four hundred, or four hundred and sixty-six dollars total cost for this?
It's for the hundred and fifty licenses right now, uh, as I'm preparing to move to Windows eleven.
It's only twenty-four hundred, not two hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, two thousand four hundred.
Hundred and fifty computers. We're basically updating hundred and fifty computers to Windows eleven.
Did we get the, did we get the three bids on that?
This is directly from the manufacturer with their government pricing. No other so, no other company can even provide a bid for this.
Okay. All right.
I figured it's licensing. It's like asking Microsoft Word to go out and look.
Okay, thank you.
Look, I'm gonna let you finish this one, Council.
Any more discussion on this? No more discussion, I see. Whoever approves, please, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it. Council chair, it's all yours.
Thank you, Council pro town. Next up, uh, we have no petition from citizens, ordinance resolutions, new business. Uh, next up, we have new business license renewal for, uh-
Carreros.
Carreros, uh, Cucina.
Cucina.
Cucina Italian, I'm sorry, I, I'm Italian.
Italiana. Council chair? Councilman Coniston.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the business license renewal for Carreras Cucina Italiana at six five six five North Telegraph as outlined in thirteen A.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Coniston, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. If, uh, for those who are at home or in the audience, if you have not eaten here, um, it's by the longstanding car wash, Tony's Car Wash. It is amazing. Uh, I cannot tell you how amazing the Massacholi is. It really knocked my socks off. I enjoyed it. Uh, my socks are on now, though. Next up, we have temporary food truck, car license-
The table vote.
Where did we vote?
Sorry, you can tell I'm fasting.
Motion made by Councilman Coniston, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? The ayes have it, motion carries. The ayes have it, motion carries.
I got excited, I saw the time, I'm thinking we're about to get out of here.
Next up, we have temporary food truck, cart license application.
Council Chair.
Councilman Saab.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the temporary food truck, cart license renewal application for Shawarmaja as outlined in 13B.
Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Constant.
I, I've been in contact with, with our building director, if he's on, please. Two things with this, this food truck. I'm all for the food truck and everything. They're in violation of how the food truck is parked at the location. The city's asked them multiple times to correct it, and our business owner adjacent to them blocks his complete view and building from the street. And the plans that they submitted to the city in the backup shows that the truck should be a certain way against the building. They have it the long way, it affects traffic. And then I also asked the building department if they had pulled permits for the cement where they made a sitting area, which they didn't get approved for, and they did not also. So I'm going to ask that, that we turn this down until they come compliance, just like Mr. Winsell said, that we gotta, we gotta do our diligence on all the businesses in the city to make sure everybody's right. Nothing against them, but they have to comply with the plans they have, the way the cart is supposed to be, the food truck. And it just, it's not fair for the business owner next door, that all he has to look through all day is a food truck. Can't see no traffic, no traffic can see his building. So.
So I will say.
And if we can get Rick, I'm sorry, Council Chair, if we can get Rick from the building department, if he can speak on behalf of him, I had a talk with him today.
Okay, before I let Rick speak, I just want to say, I agree, if somebody poured any type of concrete without the approval or pulling any permits, this is something that needs to be stepped down. As far as adjacent to the building, I can tell you that 100%, the food truck is on the property of the business owner, which is the mobile gas station. It's not on the attorney's property. So if they're looking out the window, they're saying, well, on somebody else's property, I'm not able to see something. You, you know, we can't enforce by saying somebody can't be there. Now, what do the plans look like? I don't know, but I'd like to hear from Rick.
Council Chair, sorry, just a quick question. The plans are actually in the backup, and if you can see how the food truck, it's supposed to go from north to south, and they have their truck east to west, and it's right here.
They have it on a diagonals, like this.
Yeah, but it's not supposed to. The city did not approve it like that.
Okay.
The city approved it like this. This is their plans here that are approved as, as directed by the city.
Rick, what are, what are you saying about this food truck?
Good evening. The, the trailer is parked on the easement, which is the, kind of like the alleyway, and we asked him to move it to the building, and he agreed to it last year, which he never did, and then he poured all that cement and put a little patio back there and kind of...
Yeah, he can do that.
Correct. If he, if he goes up against the building like he says he's gonna, then it would be okay, but we asked him to do that last year, and he did not.
What's going on with, did he pour any concrete, you're saying, and not pull any permits?
Yep, he poured it in the alley, and if we ever have to dig up our sewer, we will have to destroy all that concrete.
I mean, you know what, nobody's above the law. So, Rick, I thank you for that, Councilman Saab, I thank you for that. If this council's okay with denying this, we can move this to a motion to vote.
Let's vote.
All in favor, please state aye. Those opposed? No?
No.
Adam Clerk, do you even need a roll call on that? Okay, motion failed. I think that was the first unanimous motion failed in the history of Dearborn Heights. Next up, we have member of the public's comments from council members.
Thank you.
Council Chair. Councilman Ahmad.
Thank you, Council Chair. Just, this coming Sunday would be Easter Sunday. It's a time of renewal and hope. I think it's a time for faith and redemption. I just would like to wish all the residents, whoever observe Easter, may this Easter season fill your heart with joy, renew your spirit, and remind us all that even in the darkest moments, there is a promise of dawn. Thank you, Council Chair.
Thank you so much. I love those wise words, Councilman, as you always do. Anyone else?
Council Chair.
Councilman Saab.
A few things. First off, again, happy, happy Easter to everybody celebrating in our city. And I wish you all a great weekend, holiday. Want to give a shout out to the rec department for this weekend's marshmallow drop. Seemed like a lot of folks were having fun out there, it was cold, they still managed to get through. I also want to, I don't know if the chief is still here, fire chief, so I want to give a heads up that at the last meeting we spoke, that we're in talks of getting our ladder truck back. We ended up getting possession back of the truck from repair this past week, and they're equipping it back out to be used in full service, so that's a great addition back to the department. And I had for Mr. Deef, if he was still here, I just want to get of progress on the new fire station, as we see our neighboring city, Westlands, starting construction on their third fire station with the same grant. Mayor, do we have anywhere where we're at in this process, or affect our location, or anything, because this grant money is timed, we're restricted on it?
Council Chair.
Yep, Mayor, go ahead.
We're still working on it. We're talking to the county about trying to acquire one of the properties, but, so we're still working on it. We still have time.
You know, Mayor, with the, with the property that you guys are looking at?
We're looking at two, two locations, so let's, we're having a meeting with the county next few days, so.
Can you disclose those two locations at all?
Well, there's one on Beach Daily and one near Auto Drive.
Okay, thank you. Are you all done here, Councilman Saab?
I'm all set.
Councilwoman Breyer.
I'd like to apologize to our fire department for the lack of total attendance at the recent dinner. It turns out that myself, Denise, and Tom were not made aware or acknowledged that there was such a dinner happening. So we apologize, we don't dislike our fire department, we love them, but we think that it should have been taken care of in a different manner. I personally am really offended.
Thank you. Any other council members?
Council Chair.
Councilman Constant.
I'd like to join the other council members wishing everyone, those that observe the regular calendar, happy Easter as we enter on Holy Week. Just remember that these are increasingly volatile times, and we have a lot to be thankful for, and again, we're all praying, I'm sure, for a prompt resolution to what's going on in Gaza and now in the West Bank and in southern Lebanon. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Chair. Councilman Ahmad.
I just want to, just say a comment for our councilwoman, Breyer, said, just want to remind everybody that that was a private event hosted by Councilman Baydun and attended by, you know, different people that were privately event, you know, invited by Councilman Baydun. So it wasn't like a city event, otherwise all council members or probably elected official would be invited too.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman.
Councilwoman Menalowski-Maxwell.
Yeah, I'd like to piggyback on that. I did get a lot of calls from residents. It was put out there as being a public event. There was a lot of elected officials from the city invited. I had to defend myself from not being there because I had no clue it was even happening, and I apologize.
Thank you. Since this is the topic of discussion, and I'm, I'd be glad to do it. If I am wrong, I am wrong. I should have extended the invitation to our councilwomen's, both Councilwoman Breyer and Councilwoman Menalowski-Maxwell. I tried to contact Councilwoman Menalowski-Maxwell several times to extend an apology, because I am human. I think I called you about five times.
You didn't leave any messages, so I didn't know.
Well, you texted me back saying you would call me.
Yeah.
No callback. Yeah, it's okay. I also contacted Councilman Winsell, and I apologized, and we had a good conversation regarding that. So I, I will say in the past that I've invited most council members, and people just didn't show up. And I want you to know, the event started off as a joke. However, not to, not to, yeah, the event started off as a joke between Phil and myself, saying, hey, you should fast, and I'll buy you dinner. And I'll invite a couple of my friends, it got a little bigger, got a little bigger. So it was never an ill intention to not invite the entire council, however, I will take full responsibility, because I truly admire and respect both of our councilwomen and our councilmen who were not invited. So I sincerely apologize, I hope you can accept that apology. This had nothing to do with the fire department.
No, no, I get it, you know. Just to say that people thought that we are against Ramadan because we didn't show, it made us look bad as a person.
And I apologize.
We are one body, together, united.
Yeah, will you accept my apology?
Yeah, I will.
Thank you, will you accept my apology?
I'm still thinking about it.
Okay. I, well, I didn't, I didn't expect you to accept my apology.
Council Chair.
Hang on, I, I didn't expect the councilwoman to accept my apology, but that's okay. I am always gonna, I'm going to sincerely apologize, and I had that conversation with Councilman Winsell, he allowed me to give that conversation with him. Secondly, happy Easter to all of our friends and family. It's a time to stay together. You know, if there's any Easter egg hunts going around, or if there's taking photos with an Easter bunny, I think the photo that I have with an Easter bunny was I was flipped upside down by my uncle, and I was at a donut shop, and the Easter bunny was holding me, and the Easter bunny was, I was terrified ever since. But, but I really always have a good time. I take my son every year to an event in Dearborn where you can go out and chase, or, or, you know, look out for different eggs. So it's always a good time to do that. And then just lastly, I want you to know that we're coming to 16 days in Ramadan. The councilwoman has always been supportive of Ramadan, so I don't want anybody to ever think that. And then, you know, remember that people are fasting, people are tired, one might have like myself, might have a clouded mind and may forget to invite some council members, but that wasn't the case. I truly apologize, and there's no excuses for it. And, and lastly, we're ending March as Women Heritage Month. In 1975, the city of Dearborn Heights had all men on council. I can't wait for the day to see all women on this beautiful council, because our women, like my wife, my daughter, are going to, you know, they're the future of this community. And, you know, so to all the great women in our community, God bless you guys, I'm so happy that there's an entire month, the month that I was born and the city, in the month of March, that we can rise, we can recognize our great women in our community. Thank you.
Council Chair, I'm sorry, I just wanted one more thing, I just, I literally had it written down and I forgot. I just want to give a shout out to Councilman Tom Winsell for that he threw.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know why I thought that it was the last meeting that talked about it, but the family night, man, it was a heck of an event he threw, man, it was a, it was a busy event. He was, Tom was running around like his head was cut off. You know, I want to give you credit to that. Honestly, people were just all in smiles and having fun, playing basketball, swimming pool. And I truly believe this event is gonna, is gonna kick off to start even bigger in the whole community, in the whole city, citywide.
Awesome.
I mean, it was a great turnout, and I think, I want to thank all the volunteers that helped him. I want him to talk a little more about it, but I want to thank him for actually putting the effort and throwing it and doing everything, so thanks, Tom.
Thank you, much, thank you. Appreciate it.
Councilman Winsell, you're next?
Yeah. Go ahead. Anybody else? First of all, I want to recognize for all the Christians out there, this is Holy Week, it's the most holy week of the year, with the crucifixion and death of Jesus and the resurrection a few days after. It's very sacred to all of us, and I'm, I'm glad that people are respecting all of our traditions and our religious things that go on. I'd like to congratulate our Public Service Commission, they had their first meeting, and I heard it went pretty good. I'm waiting to hear from the, get the details on that. This is a great, great commission, and I think it's, the people that are serving on it should be thanked for doing, spending their time for a non-paying commission as of now. And the, speaking of the, the Family Fun Night, the nonprofit that I, I run is Jamie's Kids, we restructured the nonprofit to become our community charity now, and the main goal of community charity is to do things for, for the community. And the Family Fun Events are, are sponsored by Jamie's Kids as a nonprofit 501(c)(3) community charity. And we held our first one, like Councilman Saab said, our first Family Fun Night, and our organization is Family Fun, and it's, we currently had one at Annapolis last Saturday, we're having two more, Crestwood in May, coming up with the final dates real soon, and one at Robishod. And those are Family Fun Nights, and we plan on doing some things throughout the summer, a Family Fun Picnic. And this is something, you know, I've always preached about family and family activities, so this is just a start of something to do, a positive thing for our city, you know, all the negative things are going on, and you talk to people that watch our meetings, and they're so, my gosh, what are you guys doing, what's happening there? I wanted to do something that's a positive, I've been thinking about it for a long time, and I think this is a really good event. We planned on somewhere, hopefully between 150, 200 people showed up at Annapolis, and we had over 300 people show up. And we had dozens of volunteers, we had great staff there, working out with everyone, people from Annapolis, the Crestwood Honor Society showed up, 15 students to help us out, they dug us out of a hole, we're really worried about volunteers at that time, but it's something that we look forward to doing for the community, not just these three events, but throughout the year for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have announcements from administration. Councilwoman Breyer.
Okay. Well, tomorrow night, we are having at 6 o'clock PM at the regular location, 3335 South Beach Daily, the Ecorse Creek Commission will be meeting. And then on Thursday, this one has a change of venue due to the schools being closed, that will be at the Justice Center at Beach Daily and Michigan Avenue, and our speaker for South Dearborn Heights Civic Association, and this one will start, well, the doors will open at 6:00. I think our speaker will probably be talking around 6:30, and that will be our interim police chief, Mr. Swope. So we'd like you all to attend and bring people, and he'll be happy to answer any questions and say where we think our police department will be going forward from here. Thank you.
Any other announcements? Yep, go ahead.
Hi, I just wanted to thank everybody who helped out with the great marshmallow drop. We added the snow for an extra twist, it was a little more difficult for the kids to find the marshmallows, so I'd like to thank the Building and Maintenance Department, the Police and the Fire Department, my staff, the Crestwood High School volunteers, and most especially Target, so thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Council Chair and Mayor, just want to talk about a couple of upcoming items. First off, Wednesday, April 3rd, 2024, from, I don't know where I put the year, from 6:30 to 7:30 PM at JFK Library, Plant-Based Food 101. Learn how you can make small changes to your diet that will benefit your health, protect the environment, and improve animal welfare while still enjoying food you love, presented by Kim Corona and Katie Johnson of Veggie Michigan. Also tomorrow, springtime is the perfect time of year to eat better and get healthy. Come join us on Wednesday, March 27th, at the Caroline Kennedy Library from 7:00 to 8:30 PM for this program, How to Be a Healthier You. During this program, we'll explore the art of decoding what food labels are really saying. We'll gain a greater understanding of how everyday food choices impact our everyday health, from avoiding chronic diseases like diabetes and obesity, to adopting a Eat to Beat approach to alleviating inflammatory conditions. Let's take advantage of fresh produce and sunnier days to improve our well-being. That's all for now, thanks for your time, and see you at the library.
Thank you, Mr. McCaffrey.
Council Chair. I failed to neglect the, thank Mike McCaffrey and his library staff for their showing up at the Family Fun Night. And our Parks and Recreation Department, they were a big presence there with their little putt-putt golf and...
Oh, yeah, you're welcome, you're welcome, we'll do that again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
I'm speaking as your treasurer this evening. Council Chair, you didn't ask me that, did you? You say, are you speaking as a resident?
Well, no, I figured, I said announcements from administration, so if you're getting up right now.
That limited automatically. All right. So, again, I'm your treasurer, City of Dearborn Heights. We often partner with Wayne County Treasurer, Eric Sabry. And I just wanted to announce that they have a town hall tomorrow evening, March 27th, at 6:00 PM. It is online, available. If anybody wants more information, they can contact us at 791-3410. But the goal is to get out the news and announce all the programs that the Wayne County offers to help prevent foreclosure on homes. We're not wanting people to lose their homes. We want to get them into a payment plan. I will tell you, the City of Dearborn Heights is a partner with Wayne County for the Pay As You Stay program. So, we are working with the county treasurer to keep people in their homes. Make sure you contact us again at 313-791-3410. We'll give you all the information so you can join from the comfort of your home. Thank you.
Thank you so much, treasurer.
Council Chair.
Yep.
I'm making announcement for, we have our ComStat again tomorrow night at the 20th District Court at Police Station. ComStat is an update on statistics with the police department. We are also going to be talking about, we've started the legal tracking of all our cases, both arraignment of criminal cases, as well as our ordinance cases. We've codified it for the first time, and we'll be monitoring and presenting what we're doing. We're holding ourselves accountable for what the law department does and division does, as well as what we do, how we follow up with what the, is the police right, and the court interaction. I would also, we're, April 24th, we're looking to do an immigration day for our citizens. A free lawyers will come in. We're hosting it here to give presentation on any immigration issues people may have. It's a short timeframe, but it's a service to the community, and we want our legal department to really be proactive in reaching out to the community and meeting the needs of the community. I would say from our time when we had our estate planning and landlord tenant, we had at least four city employees who took advantage of, one of the attorneys to write work on their own estate wills and things like that, so.
Thank you.
6:00 to 8:00 PM at the police station, and.
Questions?
Yes.
Hang on, sir. Any other announcements?
Council Chair, I actually had a question, I'm sorry, I actually had a question for Roger. For tomorrow's meeting, actually, a resident asked, can they ask questions or not?
Did she just ask?
No, I thought she.
They actually do both ways. We do the cards, and we have afterwards, people can ask questions, just like the ordinance.
Yeah. Thank you.
You were, not during the presentation, but after.
All right.
Council Chair. I have just one, I forgot all about, I mean, it's one of the most important things about our Family Fun Night, are our sponsors that we had. We couldn't have done it without our sponsors, because this is a completely free event. People come and they eat, play games, and swim, and do all kinds of activities, completely free, only because of the sponsors we had. And we've had several council members sponsoring us here for our events too. And thank you for all the sponsors. We have a list of them, you can see them on our Facebook page, but thank you to all the sponsors.
Awesome. Thank you, Councilman. Do we have any other announcements?
Clerk also.
Do you have any announcements? Okay. Next up, we're gonna go to public comments. Sir, I know you asked for an additional minute, so I'll give him an additional minute.
Can you call me by my name, please?
Mr. Hassan Ayun.
Thank you.
Can you please state your name, the city you reside in, the street you live on?
Hassan Ayun, Dearborn, National Public Activist. I just want to tell everybody, Happy Easter. You know, I celebrate Christian stuff, and I sit here and celebrate Christmas, call my friends, call everybody. I go around town, and I see Merry Christmas all over. And then, I go around town, I see Happy Easter all around. But shame on Dearborn Heights. I'm a Muslim. It's Ramadan. What have you guys done? Where did you guys put Happy Ramadan? None of you did.
I did.
Hold on, Mr. Chair. You should be ashamed of yourselves. I don't know who's responsible for this. Did you guys put it over here in the city? Did you put something for the residents to come in? There's 60% Lebanese in this place, and you guys want to sit here and insult us? And you want me to sit here and just say it's okay? What do you think Ramadan's just for you guys? What about the residents? You did something at the fire department, no problem. Did you put anything around here? Did you put, hold on. Was there a resolution to put any signs up? You guys didn't put no resolution. This, 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 this is terrible. You guys sit there and celebrate everything else.
One second.
I respect all religions. All religions I respect. But I don't understand why people don't want to respect my religion. I'd like an answer from you guys, if you want to.
Can you pause this time? First and foremost, Happy Easter, Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Happy Ramadan. You know.
You guys say it to me.
Hang on, hang on, individually here, I think everybody here says Merry Christmas, Happy Easter, or Happy Ramadan.
It doesn't matter. Put a sign. Respect my religion. I don't care, man.
Sir, can you, can I, Mr. Wun, please? Come on.
Go ahead.
Come on. You asked me to answer you.
Go ahead, then.
So, I'm gonna answer you.
Okay.
We are not the administration. The administration wants to put up a Christmas tree, that's great. They want to put up a St. Patrick's Day, that's great. They want to put up something for Ramadan, that's great. If they don't, that's not on us. That's not this body here. This is a city council meeting. What is it?
Park and Rock usually does all that.
Or, or it would be the mayor or Parks and Recreation.
Yeah, but guys, come on, seriously. There's a lot of Lebanese people here. There's a lot of Lebanese people.
Not all Lebanese people are Muslims, just so you know. Lebanon is actually a Christian country.
Okay, let me say something to you. There's a lot of people that fast here. Am I correct?
Correct. Observing Ramadan.
Why don't you guys, we have, have some respect, put something, do something. You put up a Christmas tree. I celebrate. I celebrate every time. I get my grandchildren stuff. Easter, I bring them stuff. Ramadan, it looks like you guys have neglected it. It's wrong. It's very wrong. And I don't know what you guys are gonna do. Is the city failing? Yes. You're not recognizing us. And it's a shame. You should recognize us. I'm a US citizen, okay? I was born in this country. My father and mother came in 1972. And I'm gonna sit here and just look at myself and say, we've been neglected for years. Nobody looks at us. And I don't understand why Dearborn still has not done anything. I'm asking you guys, please, to respect the Holy Month. That's all I ask. To put a sign, put something, do an event for children, or we don't exist, am I correct? That's wrong. You guys are doing something for Easter. I respect Easter. I do stuff for my grandchildren. But you guys have never respected Ramadan. Shame on the administration, and shame on the council. That's all I have to say.
Council Chair.
Hang on, one second. Yeah, go ahead, Council.
You know, to Mr. Wun's comments, I honestly, I agree. You know, we do, the administration and wrecks always put on every holiday, it's decorated outside, there's flags, there's everything outside. It is kind of a shame that with, with a lot of Muslims, we have a huge Muslim population in the city, that we don't recognize them on the Holy Month. And that honestly falls down to the administration and the wrecks and parks. I mean, do we have anything planned out for Ramadan? Why not?
No. What an insult. No, no, what an insult.
Honestly, Mr. Wun, please, hold on one second. But why haven't we considered it? No wonder we have so many Muslims in our community. And Mayor, why haven't we decorated or put anything in front of City Hall?
You know, instead of pointing fingers.
I know, I'm just asking. I'm asking the questions. I'm not pointing fingers.
Take, take the blame on yourself, take the responsibility. We all take the responsibility for messing up and not doing.
I said, I said it's a shame, and I took responsibility. I'm just asking why? We do it for every other holiday, but except the Muslim holiday. It's a valid question. Okay, no answer. I'm sorry, Mr. Wun. They don't have an answer.
But here's, here's the problem. Last year, the governor recognized Ramadan as a holiday. The people in this place supposed to get a day off paid because of Ramadan. Did you know this, Mr. Chair?
No, I did not.
Well, look it up.
It's on the list.
Yeah, Councilwoman, you had something to say?
Is there a possibility we could, at this point, put something on Facebook to at least acknowledge Ramadan and the citizens who are?
I think they did on Facebook. It's just saying, and, and, and ethics of putting it on city property, at City Hall, or doing an event in the city.
Hang on, one second, please. Councilwoman?
No, I think moving forward, we do need to make changes. We dropped the ball on this one.
I agree.
And I agree. And I'm embarrassed. And we should put more effort in the future. We do have our cultural committee to help us work on it with ideas, because we do Juneteenth, you know? So, it's something we need to really address.
So, I mean, you know, there, there are Ramadan trees, maybe for next year, Mayor. You can have one at City Hall, decorate it. Those are great concerns, I mean, and you can have it up for there. I mean, I know that Dearborn does the Eid Festival every year. Maybe that's something that we can consider.
Council Chair, we've put together the paperwork for our first civic association for the city. We'll allow our commissions now to raise money for different events, to purchase things for the holidays, our cultural commission, women, the different organizations we have, which will be able to focus, I think, on making these events happen.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Thank you, sir. Please step up. Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street you live on.
All right. Good evening, everyone, Mayor, Council, Administration, citizens. I'm actually a neighbor of Dearborn Heights, down in Inkster, 170 Tromley. I was coming by, and I wish I could spend some more time. I actually had to get out of here, so I plan to come back in a couple of weeks for me. I'm with Midwest Recycling. We recycle shoes and clothing. Just wanted to figure out if we could partner with the City of Dearborn Heights. Typically with cities, we place bins and pods throughout the cities, collect different shoes and clothing, and we also give contributions back to the city based on what's collected. And so, this is one way to avoid some waste costs, and also a way to just help citizens out in terms of getting rid of some of the clothing that they no longer need. So, if I can, I'm gonna give this to the secretary to pass to everyone. Also, my business cards here, and looking forward to seeing you all in a couple of weeks.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Joelle Jones, our former state representative as well, thank you for all that you've done.
It's good to be back.
For your service. Thank you.
Council Chair. I mean, this is a great idea. In our family, we don't throw out any clothes. We take them someplace. We take them to Step 1, I think it is, over here, or.
Maybe, maybe I'll set up like a study session, and we can just look into this eventually. I'll get in contact with you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And otherwise, this stuff goes in the landfills, you know, and it can be used, reused, for sure.
Thank you so much.
You all have a blessed evening.
You too.
Any other comments? You asked for an additional minute.
My name's Ron Frenzy, live on Fairwood in Dearborn Heights. And in November 7th, they had a general election for the city council members, and the legal woman voters put out this form, and they asked five, five of the council people.
Councilwoman, please.
They had, they were asking five of the people what they thought, or what they would like to do for the city. And two comments were really interesting, so I just want to go over those. One comment was, "We have an issue of aging sycamore trees that have reached their life expectancy. They are dying. The bark and leaves are falling off all summer, summer long. Dead branches are falling and damaging cars. The DPW should cut the trees down." So, two comments about this. One is that the dead branches are falling on cars. My neighbor had a branch that fell from a sycamore tree onto their front windshield and punctured the windshield. And this, this neighbor's got two of the best little kids you'd ever want to see. They got a second grader and a third grader. They play all the time in front of their house. Imagine if that branch fell on their head, their neck, or their body. It would pierce them, even though windshield is pretty strong. So, this, this had a hole in the windshield. And so, my neighbor went to the, went to a repair place, and they charged them $205 to repair the windshield. Could the city council pay for that? Because it was your tree.
This is, why don't you do me a favor? Is this for your?
Neighbor.
Neighbor. Well, why don't you give George your neighbor's phone number, get in contact with the corporate council? I don't think we have the authority to tell somebody because of, you know, a damaged tree that, we don't even know if it was raining that day. We don't know, we don't know anything.
Doesn't, doesn't matter. It's just that it was a tree, it was your tree between the sidewalk and curb that damaged his, that damaged his windshield.
Council Chair.
And he had to lay out $205 for that.
We can get your contact information, and I'll have you reach out to corporate council or reach out to the resident. Pause this time real quick, and we'll go from there.
Council Chair, what I was gonna say was, he, the person that had the car can file a claim with the city, will pass it to our MMRA insurance carrier. They will evaluate it. I don't know what happened, the circumstances like Council Chair said, so the, our insurance carrier will evaluate the claim.
I can tell you that I know of a resident that a tree broke, a branch fell, it hit their mirror on their side. The mirror broke, and they were compensated on that for their, and it was repaired and everything on, on the MMRA's insurance part.
So, I would just see our corporate council for this information in the, oh, well, that's good.
Yeah. But now, if it was raining, you know, and, and, you know, that, that goes back to the adjuster, and the insurance company, because if it was raining and the trees were going back and forth, then it wasn't at the fault of the city.
Yeah, but it was a city tree.
I mean, so if rain falls in the city, it becomes the city's rain?
Well, it's the flood. You know, you've had all this Ekorus Creek talk about the flood.